The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And this is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Okay, Chairman, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the following items on the consent agenda. So the motion is to approve claims for payments from June 17th, 2015 through July 7th, 2015. Item B would be administrative adjustment to real property. Item C, administrative adjustment to personal property. Item D, approval of applications for property tax payment. Item E, approval of letters to the Utah Office of Tourism Committee matching funds for marketing. Item F, ratification of amendment number one to contract number 151095 between the Department of Agricultural Plant Industry and Conservation in Washington County for noxious weed and plant control and New Harmony Project. Item G, approval of a plan for expenditure of revenues through the beer tax. Item H, approvals, the social services block grant agreement between five counties, AOG and Washington County. Item I, acknowledging publication of the adoption of ordinance number 2015-105-0 on Saturday, June 20th. And item J, acknowledgement of punishment of notice of adoption of ordinance number 2015-1051-0 on Saturday, June 20th, 2015.
I second that motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, the first item on our regular agenda would be Dr. Blodgett from Southwest Utah Public Health. And we appreciate him being here this morning. We thought it was important that the public be able to see some of the things that public health does and how important it is for our community and our whole general area. We were visiting a little bit yesterday, says, you know, he's got one of those jobs that if he's doing a good job, nobody knows what's happening. If something happens out of line, why, everybody does, so.
Yeah, that's the problem. Nobody appreciates what public health does until it's not there, so. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here to present to you and to the community a little bit about public health, maybe a few issues that we're facing as a public health community. And anyway, I appreciate all the support we receive from the board. Particularly appreciate Commissioner Iverson's service on our board and his dedication to the community and the public health of the community. So, as in all things, local government is best government. And our statewide system for public health is set up so that most of the enforcement and most of the public health infrastructure that is in present is accountable and directly subject to local elected representatives on the Board of Health. That creates accountable government and creates good government. And I'm happy to represent our local health department to you. The mission for public health is to prevent disease and promote health as well as protecting the health and welfare of the community. When public health departments were established at the dawn of the modern era, when we started to understand bacteria and other kinds of, and how infections spread and things like that, there was a recognition that in this structure that we needed to create, so this is the decline in infectious disease rates and the things that contributed to it, but you'll notice that at the beginning of the century, most of the efforts that contributed to the decline in infectious disease rates were fairly simple things that we take for granted today. Sanitary revolution kinds of things. Keeping water clean and food pure and those kinds of things have made the biggest difference. The conditions that assure a community that is healthy are really multifactorial. But the role of a governmental public health infrastructure is a critical component to what we take for granted in a first world country versus a third world country for the maintaining of health and wellness in the population. So, our mission is to assess the health of the population, develop policies and ways to deal with that, and then assure that it's taking place in a timely fashion. The result of that model and of what's happened over the last century is this. You'll notice that in 1900, the leading causes of death were almost entirely infectious disease-related, where now that's all shifted towards chronic disease, and I'll talk about that here in a second. Put another way, if you look at LaRue here, she's active and alive at 84, but her mother died at 64, and her grandmother died at 45. So the 30 years of life expectancy that we've added over the last 50 years in our country has, about 70 or 80 percent of that has been due to public health interventions, things that we've done as a society to make sure that we have an environment in which people can be healthy and pursue all of those goals that we hold so dear in our community and other places. So I'd like to introduce a little bit about the structure of our department and how we go about doing things and some issues that you might have heard about recently, to put a little bit in context where the local public health department falls into place. The first division I'd like to talk about a little bit is our Health Promotion Division. This is our, this is where we deal with chronic disease and try and help people understand the things that may help keep you healthy and don't. From a medical model, this is what a doctor would tell you people die from, cardiovascular diseases. Number one killer in the United States, cancer, accidents. From a public health perspective, though, we would say, what are the underlying causes of these diseases? Cardiovascular disease is a multifactorial disease, so you can eat at McDonald's every day and you have a heart attack, or you can have parents that gave that to you, you know, when you were born. So we like to look at things as the actual underlying cause of disease, and when you look at that, it changes, and it gives you a much more different format from which to attack that. Tobacco use remains the number one killer in the United States and here in our area. 400,000 people nationwide die from tobacco smoking every year. Diet and exercise patterns, alcohol consumption, and then you can see on down the list, including illicit drug use. So, when I talk, I like to think about things like, what are the big things you can do that will help you be healthy? We've managed to get smoking rates down to about 20 percent in our nation and 9 percent here in our district. We lead the country in smoking rates, but we still have 10 percent of our population who smokes. Getting people to exercise every day, 30 minutes a day, only about 20 percent of the population does that. When you ask them if they eat their fruits and vegetables, another 20 percent, and then maintaining a healthy weight, that means BMI of less than 28, that's 40 percent. But if you try and figure out who does all of those four, the big four, that's 6 percent of the population. So we have a lot of work to do, and I'll talk a little bit about the flip side of that. But the consequences for our society of this are staggering. 70 percent of the deaths that we can face, 70 percent of hospitalizations, and 70 percent of healthcare costs are related to chronic disease burden in our society. We get 2 percent of the funding, and about 2 percent of our funding goes into chronic disease prevention. So, we're trying to figure out how to expand the scope of how we help people understand the burden of chronic disease in their own life, because it's devastating to have a chronic disease, but it's also devastating in society and in the larger scope of things. On the flip side of that, we also have 10 percent of our population that really overengage to a certain extent. And then there's a lot of messages that need to be out there about the value of moderation in all things. And so, for example, recently, studies have shown that if you take a marathon runner that runs one marathon a year, a couch potato, and somebody that exercises 30 minutes a day, and you line them up, the group that will die the youngest is the marathon runners. And so, we've got some messaging to say moderation makes a difference in people's lives, so.
Why are you looking at me? I'm not trying to be too controversial.
You're the one trying to talk me into marathon running. You're just trying to kill me, that's.
See, I don't, it's never not a controversy. It's interesting how in our modern society, we don't do things a little bit. We do everything over the top, and sometimes that's the worst thing that we could do. We're facing current challenges in this area of what we do. E-cigarettes have surged on the scene, it's a brand-new issue. Much of the information about e-cigarettes that's out there is just downright false. It's not just water vapor, as those are proponents of would claim. There's many other things about e-cigarettes that are very worrisome, and so we'll continue to work on that front. Next, we work on infectious disease control. We know all of the diseases, or 78 diseases that are transmittable in the community. We trace those down, we try and get information out about that and stop the spread of that disease in the community. So, often when you see us in the paper, it's because a disease has spread that you don't want to know about. And I would say, one of our primary roles in this area is to get good information out. So, if you were to listen too much to the news, you would have thought everybody was going to die from Ebola at some point last year. When I was talking to my five-year-old and they were afraid of Ebola, I realized that we needed to do something different, and so we put out messages saying, you know, Ebola is really a problem in Africa because they don't have a public health infrastructure, but here in America, we'll do just fine. We had measles outbreak from Disneyland this year, and that's starting to illustrate some of the concerns we have with decreasing vaccination rates and stuff like that, but I'll talk about that here in a second. Environmental health is the regulatory component of what we do, so we inspect restaurants, we inspect pools, we have almost 100 different things that we have responsibility for making sure they're going well in the community. And I think the public expects that these are done, so they want food to be good when they go into a restaurant. You might have seen where they shut down a restaurant in Salt Lake just over the last week, where the ducks were dripping onto the salad, you know, things like that cause problems for people, and you want somebody in there taking a look at those kinds of things. We've been worried recently about the rise of new mobile food establishments, and they've been very difficult to track and keep track of, so we'll keep you apprised of that. And foodborne outbreaks are increasing, and we need to make sure we're present to help stop the spread of those. So, we also have a nursing component in which probably what we're most traditionally associated with at the health department, providing immunizations and some of those kinds of programs. These are programs targeted to help anyone in the community, really, that needs those help. Our travel clinic, for example, where you can come in and get immunizations before you travel, is available to all and is offered at a reasonable price to do so. We've just added new screening tests. Hemoglobin A1C, total cholesterol for a very reasonable price, 35 bucks for a total cholesterol screening, much cheaper than you would find with your insurance or things like that. Trying to continually expand the envelope of things we can do to help people in their quest to be healthier. We worry about the immunization status, I'll talk about that just for a minute. I love this quote from Benjamin Franklin. "In 1736, I lost one of my sons, a fine boy of four years old by the smallpox taken in the common way." He said that because people accused him of, the boy of dying when he immunized him, and that wasn't true. He got sick when a smallpox outbreak happened. "I long regretted bitterly and still regret that I had not given it to him by inoculation." So the process in Benjamin Franklin's time was they would give them the minor form of smallpox, not the major form. The minor form killed one in about 18 people that got it. The major form killed about one in three. So, immunization was a little different process back then. Now it's one in a million, with maybe a complication, back then, one in 18. This I mention for the sake of parents who omit that operation on the supposition that they should never forgive themselves if a child died under that, the one in 18. My example showing that the regret may be the same either way, and that therefore, the safer should be taken. So, in a modern context where one in a million is thought to be maybe not such a good risk, I question the logic of that when you can see what immunization has done over the years. 99-plus percent decrease in all, in these diseases that used to kill thousands and thousands of kids a year. Measles, for example, killed 5,000 kids every year in the United States before the introduction of vaccination. Polio, people lined up around the block to get polio vaccine because it was such a terrible disease. And I don't think we ever want to see these diseases come back in regular abundance in our country. The danger is that as we decrease our immunization rates, we start, we will start to see those circulate in the population again as we are seeing with pertussis and sometimes measles. There has been this rise in immunization costs that we're worried about. So, all in all, in our nursing programs, we see almost half the population every year, as well as everybody is impacted by public health with the things that we do. We have our emergency preparedness component that we do, promoting personal and community preparedness for the worst, 72-hour kits, as well as working with our community partners. We live in a wonderful part of the world where people coordinate with each other and are on the same page. We just had a functional exercise that was grateful to have our county commissioners there for, where we went through the process of evaluating where we are for a big, large-scale outbreak of infectious disease, and we did very well with that. And next year, we'll look to have a full-scale exercise where we roll out trucks and things like that. So, how do we try and get the message out? We have our magazine, which comes to every home in the district. Hopefully, we're proud of that, and we put messages out about public health there. We have a great website, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Pinterest. Please follow us, and we'll put out messages about things you need to know about your health. It's really a pleasure for me, in 15 minutes, to give you an overview of what the health department's all about. But I'm grateful to be your health officer and grateful to serve here in this wonderful community. I love what I do and the people that we serve, so thank you so very much. Any questions that you have, I'm welcome.
So, you said marathons are bad, but how about half Ironmans?
I don't want to be specific. I'm just, I'm pointing out that sometimes, when a little is good, more isn't necessarily good, and so. I shouldn't have said that.
I just want to say, as the newest member of the board, the health board, it's really a lot of fun, not only because I think I've learned a lot. I think we have the best health, public health officer in the nation in Dr. Blodgett. I really do. I mean, I believe he is very, he safeguards the taxpayer money. It's amazing the different programs you're able to run with a fairly small budget. I mean, the county does contribute 20 percent of their budget in the five-county area, and so, I just, hats off to you. I think you and your team do a phenomenal job, and it's just, it's great that we have somebody of your quality here in our county. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we do really appreciate talking. You've been here for 10 years, now that's gone by off quick, so.
It's amazing to think about, I can't believe it. Thank you so much for the support you give us in all of our activities. Whatever we can do to help, let us know.
Thanks. And let us know how we can help you.
If somebody in the community needs to contact, what's the best way to do that?
We have a submit information form on the website, there's numbers there that you can call us directly, Facebook, Pinterest, you know, any way that you can get to us, we're welcome. I can give you my phone number if you think that would help. It's 435-986-2545 as well, so.
And then you're also located down by the old hospital on the.
Right, right across the street from the helicopter pad, that office complex there is our building. So, come on down and come up to the top floor, we'd be happy to talk to you.
Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, our next item, Mark Blanch. Got some purchase, I've got Trevor, okay?
Yeah, Mark's out of the office today and asked me to cover for you, so appreciate the opportunity to be here with you guys. We have five proposed purchase requisitions before you today. I'm happy to say that all five of these are, have been budgeted for and are within budget. We have three from our convention and tourism office. The first one is an annual sponsorship for the NJCAA. It's the softball that they come in here and promote. The sponsorship to help bring those, that organization in is $20,000.
Okay, that's the National Junior College Athletic Association, that's the championship.
Yeah, correct. The next one for them is Adventure Media LLC. It's an advertising marketing for their International Visitors Guide ad that they promote. It's for $12,795. And the third one is for the Trip Advisor LLC, and it's for their internet service marketing for six months. It covers from July through December of 2015, and that's also for $20,000. And then the other two that we have is one for the regional park and then for the sheriff's office. The regional park is looking to enhance and fix and improve their sound system in large outdoor arena. I believe this is in preparation for the fair and kind of get things ready. They've had some problems in the past and need to improve on that. They've limped it along for a while, but that, they've gone out and got several bids and went with pole sound for $13,370.74. And then the final purchase requisition is for the sheriff's office. They're looking to purchase 65 of the laptops for their vehicles, and it comes with the hardware and so forth to mount those. It's for $117,000 even is what the purchase requisition is for.
Will this be enough to maybe the sheriff?
The sheriff.
Will this replace all the laptops in all the patrol cars?
Yes.
Okay.
Say that on the speakers, so everybody can hear you.
The reason that we've gone to doing it this route is we were budgeting for it every year and replacing a third of them every year as we go along, and the problem with that is trying to keep everything consistent and of the same product type with the same markings, Windows 7, Windows 8, whichever. We found it's easier if everything's the same, because then we just create a, what they call a clone. If there's a problem with one, they just wipe it, load it back on, keeps going forward. So we've adjusted our budget so that it's lower for the two years, and then we do the one large purchase on that third year as we do the rotation, so.
So, I don't know if you had a chance to ride lines, but I was amazed at how much they use their laptop computers every time they pull over a car, look at, I mean, it was amazing what they do on these things, so.
Now, are you going to put passwords in there just in case there's some stranger driving them around in a deputy car? They won't be able to have Wi-Fi? I'm just kidding, that.
They just go ahead and take the employee's cellphone that's sitting in the drink cup and use it nonstop while they're driving, so.
Great.
Any other questions amongst these five?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the purchase request presented today.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted the sheriff to know that the only reason I brought that up was because he blamed it on LeVerque, and, you know, the guy where he lived in LeVerque. I'm just kidding.
Okay. Excuse me. Item number three, consideration of resolution R-2015-1914, a resolution approving agreement between Orient LLC and Washington County.
Commissioners, this is our wellness program, and the wellness program, I believe, is serving the county very well. We have evaluated vendors from time to time, and we're recommending a renewal, this time with Orient.
So, maybe Eric can speak to this. But I notice that our health standards for, are different between the male and the female. The males have to have a lower body fat percentage to qualify, is that fair?
I'm just going to not wade into that.
Okay.
You're not going to give a legal opinion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution R-2015-194.
I go ahead and second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Will you have them come down and do that smoothie demonstration again? The healthy smoothies?
Sure.
Okay, item four, consideration of resolution R-2015-1915, a resolution approving agreement reducing a medical lien in a personal injury matter.
So, I guess I can address that because I've kind of taken the lead on this, kind of explained to everybody on TV and stuff, and so, our health insurance is, we're self-insured here in the county, so if someone has an issue come up, the county actually pays for that. Anyways, we, it was sad, but we had a, somebody that's covered in our health insurance was involved in quite a serious accident and incurred substantial medical bills. Anyways, there was a lawsuit that resulted from that, and they're in the process of finalizing that lawsuit. So, part of that is they go back, it's very common for attorneys to go back and negotiate people that have liens, and the county did place a lien on the settlement of the lawsuit. Unfortunately, there's not enough money in the settlement to cover everybody's damage on that, and so it's very common that we go back and take adjustments. And so, it's my recommendation that the county reduce our portion by 20 percent of the total amount taken. This was a balance of trying to protect the employees of the county and representing and protecting the county's interests because it is quite a, quite a large sum of money, but considering all the factors, I think this is a fair and reasonable result.
Is that a motion?
Oh, so with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution number R-2015-1915, a resolution approving a agreement reducing a medical lien in a personal injury matter.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Item number five, consideration of resolution R-2015-1916, a resolution ratifying the execution of a lease between Washington County and the Bureau of Indian Affairs for office space in the Office Plaza Building.
Commissioners, this is a lease that we've had with the Bureau of Indian Affairs for many years. This lease extends the term for another 36 months firm with an option to go to 56 months. The federal government, through the Bureau of Indian Affairs, has been a great tenant for us, and it's been beneficial for both parties. I would recommend your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve resolution number R-2015-1916, a resolution ratifying the execution of a lease renewal agreement between the Bureau of Indian Affairs and Washington County for the office space in the Office Plaza Building.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Item six, consideration of resolution R-2015-1917, a resolution reappointing Dean Cox to the Hurrican Valley Special Service District Administrative Board. The Hurrican Valley Special Service District covers a good portion of unincorporated areas, mostly on COLOP, and so Dean is a resident on there, and so he's been serving the past four years as our appointment on the Special Service District in Hurrican, and this is merely a resolution to reappoint him to that position that's expiring. So, if you want to make a.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve resolution number R-2015-1917, a resolution appointing Dean Cox to the Hurrican Valley Fire Special Service District Administrative Control Board.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Item number seven, consideration of resolution 2015-1918, a resolution requesting that the United Effort Plan Trust provide real property to Washington County for the purpose of providing space for a public library in Hildale City.
So, I'll go ahead and talk to this. I'm familiar with this on two parts. I'm on the library board, and I've also done some work for the United Effort Plan. Out in the city of Hildale, the vast majority of the land is owned by this trust, and it's quite a complicated and long story. But anyways, they have a lot of property out there. The citizens out there in Hildale have quite a long drive to get to the nearest library, and I think it would be very beneficial to them to have a library out there. And so this is just a proposal that we formally request from them, that they donate land to the county for the use of a public library. But I also, because I, I done work for the United Effort Plan on that side, I have to recuse myself on this one, so it'll be up to you, too.
So we can say yes or no of it?
I'm recruiting you.
No, I absolutely think this is something that, of course, we're very early in this process, and this is only a request for, to find a suitable location, but I think that it would be something that would serve a portion of our county that is struggling in some way. So anyway, I'm more than happy. So anyway, I'm more than happy to, Mr. Chairman, to make a resolution, make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two thousand fifteen dash nineteen eighteen, a resolution requesting that the United Effort Plan Trust provide real property to Washington County for the purpose of providing space for a public library in Hildale City.
I'd second that, and I might just comment as well, as we've had some discussion, this portion of the population out there is, exceeds by a ways some of the other areas in the county that, that we're providing library service for, so this is one of the reasons to move forward out there as we start the process. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I guess not. Okay, motion passes. Item number eight, consideration of resolution twenty fifteen dash nineteen nineteen, a resolution approving funds to assist the Six County Association of Governments Educational Program that allows members of Congress to visit federally managed public lands in the West. To give you a little history on this, Six County Association, which is Sevier County and Paiute and around that area, they have a ATV ride essentially every year. They've had it for the past several years, where they've brought in the congressional delegation and other interested groups and done a tour, I think it's just a one-day tour, but they've been out on the public lands and looked at various situations that are out there and given people some, or some firsthand experience. And this past year, one of Senator Hatch's persons said, you know, I've been on this two or three times. He says, what you really need to do is to get some people from some of the other states, the other offices out here that aren't familiar with, with the public lands, and get them on some of these tours. And so at our WIR meeting in Hawaii, we talked with the National Association of Counties. I think they're interested in helping to sponsor some of these, but it's going to be another year before that can take place. This tour's going to be in, in August, and so we decided that maybe it would be well if some of the counties could chip in a little bit and help to sponsor some of these other offices. And so this resolution calls for five hundred dollars to be donated to the Six County for this purpose. They figure maybe as, as high as fifteen hundred dollars to bring somebody out, but the education value is, is just tremendous on, on what it can help us with as we lobby on public land issues with the Congress. So that's kind of a history on that.
Mr. Chairman, I absolutely support this. I've been on this particular tour, and it's kind of like preaching to the choir for those of us who work with congressional staff from our own state, and it's, we in Utah often complain about the lack of understanding from, from other congressmen and congressmen. Part of the challenge is that they just don't understand our landscapes, they haven't been out here, and so anyway, I think this is money well spent. I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution R dash two thousand fifteen dash nineteen nineteen, a resolution appropriating funds to assist the Six County Association of Governments Educational Program that allows members of Congress to visit federally managed public lands in the western states.
Go ahead and second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Number nine, consideration of resolution R twenty fifteen dash nineteen twenty, a resolution ratifying a letter of agreement between Washington County and Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for conduct of a resident integrated emergency management course.
Commissioners, I could speak to this. Pete is in Salt Lake, our county emergency manager on county business, but Washington County is, as you're undoubtedly aware, has been the recipient in the last twenty years of three presidentially declared disasters, and we lead the state of Utah in that category, which is probably nothing to brag about. But Washington County has been aggressive in its emergency management program, and I think it has served our residents and communities very, very well. This is a training opportunity that we will take approximately sixty different people from the county, and this can be from the school district, some of our communities, from the county, and work together on a real-life scenario that statistically is likely to happen in Washington County. So someone from FEMA is going to come out here in August, they're going to go through the county's emergency plan, they're going to look at our different disasters that we've had and the types of threats that we face, and they're going to craft a custom training course. It'll be a four-day course where all of us can work together and better understand the role that we will play in an emergency responding, so that we can respond appropriately and quickly, and it's a phenomenal opportunity. This has been the second time in twenty years that Washington County has been invited to participate in Washington. It's actually in Emmitsburg, it's near Camp David, where we'll actually be, but, but this is a great opportunity for us to work and exercise together and better our community effort and response in the face of an emergency.
I believe our first time was a year or so after.
Our flood.
And that was in Georgia, I think.
That was in Georgia.
Yeah, that was.
Or Alabama, I can't remember.
Yeah, Alabama, Alabama it was.
Okay, I, I think always training and being prepared for, you know, emergencies and like, like a good flood that we almost had the last couple of weeks. Anyway, so I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two oh one five dash one nine oh, a resolution ratifying a letter of agreement between Washington County and the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for conduct of a resident integrated emergency management course.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Item number ten, consideration of resolution twenty fifteen dash nineteen twenty-one, a resolution approving an agreement between Washington County and Signa.
Signa.
Signa Behavioral Health, Inc., for long and short-term employee disability insurance.
Commissioners, I can speak to this, too. We periodically like to put our different coverages and contracts out to bid. We did this, this year for our long and short-term disability and came up with a, a strong savings we have been paying, a rate of fifty-two cents per hundred dollars of wage for our long and short-term disability coverage, and this putting us out to bid, we got Signa responded with a rate of forty-two and a half cents. This will save the county that pays for the long-term disability coverage, and our employees opt in for the short-term coverage. It will save everyone a considerable amount of money, and so I would recommend its approval.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we.
Just quickly, so I can get something out on the minutes. On the application for this, several sections were crossed out by the company because they weren't applicable to us, and, and then there, there will be signatures kind of linked to that, and so just so that we can reflect that, you know, those aren't material changes to anything, they're just things that weren't applicable because of how we operate our insurance.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two oh one five dash one nine two one, a resolution approving an agreement between Washington County and Signa Behavioral Health, Inc., for long-term and short-term employee disability insurance.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Item number eleven, Commissioners' report. Just may make mention that here in a couple of days, we'll be going back to Charlotte, North Carolina, for our National Associations of Counties meetings, and these, I think, are very important to, to the county. We all serve on different steering committees representing the state of Utah there, and I'm on public lands, Zach, you're, or Zach, you're on transportation. envirmente energy. Energy and land use, the, one of the more controversial groups back there, so we, we put the one with all the fire. But anyway, that, that is an important, important meeting that we'll be, we'll be going to there for a couple of days. Either of you have anything that?
No, I think I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, Public Works.
Just a quick update. We're finishing up most of our grading projects now, and the road department will be transitioning over into hauling chips and getting ready for our chip sale program. We've got four areas in the county we'll be working on this year to try and bring some more of the roads back up to a reasonable standard. We did not have any reports of any major flooding problems or anything, so we've made it through that okay. I'm sure some of the roads in the outer areas have got a little damage on them, but we'll hit those with our normal maintenance and grading next time through and should clean that up, so. Just remind the public, as they're around those areas, we're going to be chipping, and they'll see large piles of chips, rocks there, dump trucks, graders, stuff moving around there, if they just be careful when they pass, so we don't have any problems with that.
So where, where are those going to be?
We have some in New Harmony, Diamond Valley, two areas in New Harmony, Diamond Valley, and I think Silver, I'm not positive, but Silver Valley Estates is the other one, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
County Development and Planning.
Mr. Scott asked to be excused. He's got his staff meeting that is presently going on right now, and he's in that.
That's right. We, we rescheduled this for an earlier time today, so.
That's correct.
If we can get to other business that came up. Okay, HCP.
Commissioners, just an update. I had an opportunity to visit with the BLM Associate State Director last week at the Management Oversight Group meeting, and she reported that she continues to check with the director on the Long Valley Exchange Proposal, and it is in, in the director's office and is only waiting for that one more approval before then it will come back here to the local office to, or to the state office, I guess, actually, to be able to go through the rest of the process. So that's good information and, and good news that, that the state director is right on top of it and pushing that forward, and so hopefully that will, that will move along soon. Other items, we just continue to work with landowners on clearances and boundary and fence line issues and, and agreements, and we are working on, on another item on Confluence Park. We're working with Alfa Engineering to come up with a feasibility and cost estimate on getting an irrigation line installed to the, the farmland that is in Confluence Park, so we're waiting on that and hopeful that we'll come out with a good cost estimate and a good feasibility. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to reemphasize, the Long Valley Exchange is something very important for the county and for the residents there, that we'll be working on getting some of the final acreage that's in the HCP, in the Habitat Conservation Plan, exchanged for land outside of the reserve, and something we've been working very hard on to get, get that accomplished, and so we'll be glad to, to see that completed, even though it's still got another year or more to, to get through all the processes it's got to do, so. It's amazing how much time it takes to do a simple transaction. So anything further from either of you? Okay, nothing else, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.